I would like to call the Mashpee Public Schools Business, School Committee Business Meeting for April 27th, 2022 to order. The first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd also like to say that the Mashpee Public Schools recognize and honor the many generations of Wampanoak people who have lived and been sustained on this territory for more than 10,000 years. Thank you. Now, to ratify the agenda for tonight, we have a couple of changes that I'm just going to ask the superintendent to review with you.
Sure. So, on the second page of the agenda, under New Business, the bullet superintendent's SY2122 End of the Year Goals Update. And then the item following that, School Committee Check-In Self-Evaluation for School Year 2122 Goals. We are requesting that that be moved to the May 4th meeting, which is next Wednesday. And then also above that, on the Tuition Waiver Request, we have three additional to add to that. We have JK in Grade 7, DR in Grade 3, and KA in Grade K.
All right. Thank you. Is there any other revisions or suggestions? Any objections to making those changes? Okay. I'll take a motion to ratify.
Madam Chair, I move to ratify the agenda for April 27th, 2022 as amended.
Thank you, Brian. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Don. Any discussion? Right, hearing none. Matt, how do you vote?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. It's unanimous. Next, we have Public Comment. Do we have any public comment tonight? Oh, great.
I'm so, Sherry, do you want to read?
Name and address. You can come and sit there. Yep, the microphone.
So, tonight we have Ms. Rinalda Hendricks-Trompton. And what is your address?
137 Meeting House Road.
And it was Rinalda?
Rinalda.
Okay.
Yes.
Thanks. So, go ahead.
Okay. So, I'm here in regards to my grandchildren. And my daughter couldn't make it tonight because she had to bring the kids to football practice. But anyways, I was speaking in her behalf. We were informed that the kids had to leave the school system because of where their mom had to move. But they were living with me their whole life and going to the Mashpee schools here. In October, this past October, I had to leave my house. My landlord sold his house. So, I had like three weeks to leave and nowhere to go. So, I'm staying with my mom. I stay with my daughter sometimes. And I had spoke to the superintendent about this because when she found out, I told her that we had to move. And she said, "Well, you're going to have to go to Falmouth schools." I said, "Well, I'm still living here in Mashpee. And my children, my grandchildren, I need them to stay in the school system because we're going to look for another house here. And my daughter's on tribal housing list, on a waiting list to get into one of the new houses that are being built." There was a pause on it for a while, but the houses are going back up now. So, hopefully she gets in there sooner than later. She had to take the house in Falmouth because that was the only house there was. And she has a Section 8 voucher that she waited seven years for, and she didn't want to lose it. So, she took what she could. So, with that being said, we were able to keep the kids in school up until just recently. And they again said, "Well, because of the location, you know, the mother's staying in Falmouth, the kids have to go to Falmouth schools." I wasn't in agreement with it, but the last meeting we had, I was like, "Well, you know, we'll do what we have to do." And so, we thought about it over school vacation, and the kids were really distraught and feeling displaced. And Denahi has some issues, not really learning issues. I mean, he's doing a lot better. And I commend the team that he has here at Quashinet and at Casey Coombs because when he was there, he was having issues, but has come so far now and really has grown attached to the people he's working with and is doing a lot better. But once he found out that he had to leave the school, the attitudes and the acting up started up again. So, with that being said, I reached out to a few tribal members, elders, and they told me to fight it. So, that's what I'm here for. I'm here to fight to keep them into the school system where they've been their whole life, where I've been my whole life. And I'm just hoping that things will work out where they can get back into the school system. I did not enroll them into Falmouth, and I'm hoping something can be worked out. I spoke with Roxanne Mills-Brown, the Education Department, head of Education Department at the tribe. And she said she spoke with the assistant today, and the assistant told her to tell my daughter to write an email stating something about a waiver form. Not quite sure what that is.
I think that might have been what the adjustments to our agenda were about. So, I have a feeling that's going to get, is that?
Yeah. So, we did receive the email this afternoon from your daughter and that their tuition waiver request has been added to this agenda?
Okay. And I just had a question. Roxanne had said to me something about the waiver form is because taxes aren't paid in Mashpee or something. Is that what that is all about?
It's related to not being residents of Mashpee. And technically, there is a tuition fee for every student. So, you are requesting for the balance of this year that the school committee waives that tuition.
Okay. Because for them. Oh, okay. I don't know. She said something about because taxes aren't being paid in the town or whatever. But, I mean, both of our vehicles, Summers and mine, we still pay taxes.
Yeah.
No, it's not. That's not it. Okay. I was like, "This is very confusing." But...
The tuition waiver covers them for the balance of this year. Hopefully, they'll be living in Mashpee. If they're not, you need to apply for school choice.
Oh, yes.
And hopefully, that would be a place that would, they'd have a spot.
Yeah. They only have like maybe two months left to the school year.
37 days, I heard.
Yeah. So, we're really hoping that they can get back in. I mean, again, I commend the teachers and the staff that has been working with Denahi and has done a wonderful job with him and has brought him a long way. And I'm just hoping to continue that instead of disrupting him and putting him in another school where he's totally, I mean, I know he's nine years old, but he's just, I don't know. And I don't want to send him back further than where we've already gotten him.
Sure.
So, I'm hoping something can be worked out and we can get them back into the school system before that, you know, and finish out the year.
And just to acknowledge, we appreciate the influence and impact that you have for your grandchildren. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
If you want to hang out for a second, we can maybe move the tuition waivers up in the agenda if there's no objection from the committee, and then you don't have to wait all night to...
That'd be great.
Yeah, to hear the results, if that would be all right. So, thanks for coming, Rinalda. Thanks to Patty for making the amendments to the agenda. Do we have any other public comment?
Sherry, there was no one else.
Okay. All right. So, let's just, I'll take a motion to move up the tuition waiver requests to next on the agenda.
So moved.
I have a first motion by Don, a second by...
I'll second.
Kathy. And is there any discussion? Okay. Matt, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Don?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So, we're going to move the tuition waiver requests up next. Patty, do you want to?
And do you want to do them as a group? Yes, okay. So, we have a ninth grader, student AR. Her family is requesting a tuition waiver for the balance of this school year. We have three siblings, MD, MD, and RD, two in Grade 9, one in Grade 10. They are asking for a tuition waiver. We have student JK in Grade 7, and their family is requesting one. And then DR and KA are related to what our speaker spoke of, a third grader and a kindergartner. And so, it's 1, 2, 3, 7 students are requesting tuition waivers for the balance of this school year. And if the situation is that they're not living in Mashpee, all have been encouraged to complete a school choice application for next year.
All right. I'll take a motion. Do you have a question?
No, I'll do it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve a tuition waiver for the remaining 37 days of this physical year for AR, MD, MD, RD, BR, and is it JK?
JK.
JK.
And KA.
We'll get it. Sherry will take care of it.
We have it.
All right. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Any further discussion? You're good then? Okay. Matt?
So, yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well.
And so, all the families will be notified, you know, later tonight in an email that that's been approved.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in, and thanks Patty. I'm getting a message that the Zoom ID for the, is bad.
The whole Zoom seems to be bad.
Yes.
Okay.
That's what Sean was trying to do.
Okay.
No one seems to be the host.
Okay. So, I will just respond to that in a second. Okay. So, now moving on, we are, we get to have a couple of presentations. So, the first I have is on, are we doing the European tour first, or are we doing the Immigration Project first?
Tour.
Okay. Let's do it. Is anyone still jet lagged?
Yes.
I am. I think I got back a day earlier than you. And last night was like the latest I stayed up in the last five days. So, I'm hoping I get through the meeting tonight.
Deb, do you want to take the microphone?
Yeah.
I know you may not want to.
I'll stand up my center.
Think of it as a really big pencil.
So, we came back, and we're all alive and very well. We had a fantastic time. And so, we made the little presentation to show you the places we went. Can you click it when we're ready? But before we left, we did the Bon Voyage dinner that we mentioned to you all last time I was here. And we even had the tiramisu in case you showed up. And they made biscotti too. This was all made by the chef and the culinary students, and they did a fantastic job. They made spaghetti dinner and salad and rolls and everything, and it was just a wonderful job. So, I just really wanted to be able to acknowledge that. And they even got new jackets. And Perry actually wore his little tuxedo with his white gloves, and it was very special. So, that was really nice. And so, we had a whole family dinner, and all the parents were there, and it was fabulous. So, then the first day we left, we flew over the Alps, which I thought was really amazing, amazing thing for the kids to see. Some had never flown before. And so, we have some photos of the kids looking out the window with awe, and it was fantastic, the whole thing. Just even waiting in the airport, they were very excited, and we had a great time. So, then this is our first day when we got to Paris, when we arrived. And we had the same bus driver for the whole trip, and we had a lot of fun even just on the bus. Did a lot of singing. And we just had a lot of fun, no matter what we did. Let's see, this is just one of the hotels we stayed in. Then day two in Paris, we had the whole day there, and we did a city walk first. And then we also went to the Eiffel Tower. And in the evening, we went on a boat cruise down the Seine, the Seine River. And so, you could see the Eiffel Tower at night. And at certain times of the night, it glows and it shimmers, and it's all gold and beautiful. So, that was really great to see. And then the next day, we went to the Louvre. So, this and that one over there are the Louvre, but you can go to the next page. And then this amazing little magical thing happened right on that night. We were feeling all so happy and had so much fun, and we're so happy that we were in Paris in springtime, and it was so warm, that we heard a DJ playing in the middle of San Michelle Square. And so, we went over to watch him, and he realized that we were Americans, and he decided to play American music for us. And it turned into a spontaneous dance party. He played Cotton Eye Joe, and some people just couldn't stop themselves from going out and doing the dance. And more and more crowd gathered around from France. They all stood around and watched, and then he played more and more songs, and we danced more and more. And then they eventually joined us and danced with us, and little kids danced, and it was a wonderful time. So, you can see some people busting a move here. And there's even a little video. I don't know if that'll be big enough if you can see it. Oh, darn, we had a little video of it. But we had some really amazing dancers, and everybody just laughed, and it was very, very joyful. So, it was just an amazing thing that just happens on its own. It just happened organically. But we made big impression, I think, on the Parisians and all the people that were visiting, and everybody was smiling and clapping along. So, it was really one of my very favorite moments of the whole trip. Oh. They're all dancing up there. Yeah. You'll actually want to see it.
I want to see it.
So, we taught them how to do that. And then the next day, we went to the Musée d'Orsay. We went to everywhere. What was that? Oh, yes. And that evening, we went to Montmartre, and we went to the soccer court up on the hill so they could see the overall view of Paris at night. So, that was the last night of that. Then the next day, we flew to Italy. We had to get up at 4:00 in the morning, and they all did it perfectly. No one was late. Well, one minute later. But amazing for 4:00 in the morning, they got up so we could get on the plane and fly to Italy that morning. And then that day, we went to Borano, which is a little town, a little island next to Venice. But it's a fisherman's village, and it's all filled with beautiful, colorful houses. And they have the same canals that they have in Venice, and it's very picturesque. So, we went there for the day, and the kids had lunch there. And it was the day after Easter, so it was very packed. We thought we were going to have the place to ourselves, but it's holiday that day in Italy, so it was very, very packed. But anyway, that was Borano. And then the next day, we went to Morano, which is another island next to Venice where they make the glass. So, we went to a glass blowing demonstration, and it was really quite amazing to see the man do it. And the kids were in awe. Their faces were just amazed watching him do it. And then we went to the little shop and picked out a little glass or something that they could bring home. So, that was a wonderful day. And then we went the next day to Venice. And we arrived in St. Mark's Square, which is the center of it all. And we had one little funny incident where a bird pooped on somebody's shoulder. So, that child, very good luck. That's what we told them. But so, that was pretty funny. But other than that, we went to the Doge's Palace and went through all of that and saw beautiful, beautiful, incredible buildings with these paintings and just glorious, beautiful artwork everywhere. And they had lunch wherever they wanted in the square, and they shopped a little bit. And then we went on the gondola rides in the afternoon. And that was the highlight, I think, for a lot of people going on the gondola rides.
Did they sing to them?
What's that?
Did they sing on the gondola?
Did they what? Sing? No, they didn't on ours. But, yeah. So, we could have sang ourselves, though, I guess. But it was great. They got the very handsome ones. So, yeah, these are more from Venice because I couldn't fit those all in one slide. There's just too many beautiful things.
Wow.
All right. And then the next day, we drove from Venice to Assisi, which is an old medieval town, very, very beautiful. And it's where Saint Francis of Assisi was from. And they have a big cathedral dedicated to him. So, we went in and visited that for a bit, but little winding streets and all medieval buildings and everything. And another overall look high up where you could see the whole Tuscany countryside was beautiful. And then we went to Florence. And...
Saw David.
We saw David. Yeah, he was there. He says hi. And we saw the Golden Gates of Paradise. Maybe you've heard of those. That's a very famous historical art piece. And we saw the Ponte Vecchio Bridge. We went to a high overlook where you could see the city overall, and then you could see the bridge to the left, which are the two iconic things for Florence. And this is just some photos of us all eating together and having fun. I think a lot of kids, a lot of families, everyone's family nowadays doesn't always get to sit down and eat a meal together. And a lot of times, they're running to sports, running here, running there. So, it was really nice to be able to eat meals with one another and sit down and be able to talk. So, that was a part of the bonding time. You can see Will has his little beret on from Paris. But, yeah, so those are things. This just reminds me too that the walking, so I told them over and over, be careful because you've got to wear comfortable shoes. And that's because we did so much walking. I forget, you...
73 miles.
73 miles we walked in those few days over those. So, some days, it was around 10 to 15 miles in a day. So, we walked a lot, but we saw everything. So, these are just some photos, some... Oh, and then they were so happy, more spontaneity. I don't know if you can see it. Yeah. I'll move so you guys can see. Tevita, this is you. You and Will skipping. You were skipping from happiness, from happiness.
Why is someone reporting?
I didn't do that. All right. So, then one of the favorite things too was we did gelato every day, every single day because it was so good. And some people wanted to do it more than once a day. I think some people did. But, yeah, so there's the gelato. There's, then we went to Rome, and one of the big favorites was the Colosseum. And this is the Piazza Nuovana, which is very popular, and the fountain.
Trevi.
Trevi Fountain. Thank you. We saw that very quickly because it was pretty crowded. Yes, so that's the first day in Rome, second day in Rome, we saw more. We went to the Roman Forum, which I had never been to before, and that really has all the old historic ruins and everything. So, that was just spectacular. And it was Katrina Mayan's birthday. She turned 18. So, she had a very special birthday dinner and special cake. So, yes, we went to the Vatican too. Right, some of those were on the page before. And this is just some of the art that we saw, including Mona Lisa, who's very tiny, if you haven't seen her. She's much smaller than you might expect. But, and then we had a wonderful homecoming. The parents came and greeted all their loved ones at the airport, and they had nice hugs and kisses and signs welcoming people back. And we just couldn't say enough how wonderful these kids were for the trip. We had perfect behavior the whole time. We had 31 perfect COVID tests before we came home. We had, they watched out for each other, they helped one another. Several people commented to us how great the kids were. There are lots of other tours that come through, and they might be, in fact, we saw some of them at some of the hotels we were at where the kids were wild and just running rampage around the hotel. And the kids said to us, "I don't think they have the same rules as we do, Mrs. T." And they were really crazy. And our tour director told us the last group she had was so difficult, she thought she was going to quit. And then she said after having us, she loved her job again. And in fact, her name was Caroline. So, on the last night of the tour, we sang Sweet Caroline too. So, anyway, I have a couple of the kids here that were on the trip that just going to tell you a sentence or two of how they thought of it. Anybody want to go first?
Thanks to use the mic. Yeah, I know. I hate it. So, I just really wanted to say that this trip was really, it was an amazing experience. Mrs. Reynolds kept saying the whole time, she's waited like 50 years to get to go see the things that we got to see when, I mean, I'm 17, but some kids were younger, like 16, some kids were 18. But I just think it was such an amazing opportunity and definitely a once-in-a-lifetime thing. Like, from when I was little, I always wanted to go to Paris, and I didn't really think I'd ever get to go. So, being able to have this opportunity was, it was really amazing. And I made memories that I'll like look back on for my entire life. And being able to go with my friends too was also really cool. So, yeah, it was just, it was really fun, and I hope that people can do this again.
Before you pass the mic, I'm sorry. I'm sure they all know you, but I don't. Could you introduce yourself?
Oh, sorry. I'm Abigail McGurrie. I'm a senior.
Senior, great. Thanks, Abigail.
Thank you.
Oh, all three at once?
Okay. Hello. Hi, I am Tevita Cap, so I'm a senior here. Yeah. Oh, my gosh. Okay, anyways, I had the room with these guys, so, yeah, that's fine. Skylar, do you have your goggles? He might need them in a couple of minutes.
I need them.
Really? Sorry, senior sense and stuff. Okay. Anyways, this trip was fantastic. It was such, so many moments, so many memories that I've made. And just over and all, it was almost like, it was like check right off the bucket list. It was something that was awesome. I think one of the most memorable moments, at least for me, were the bus rides that we had to take on our way there, three hours or four hours. But the funny conversations that we had on the bus, also laying on top of each other was great because we had to, we were all sleep deprived. So, we have a picture of that. It's not sent in yet, but I have the picture, so I'm going to send it in. So, yeah. Richard, do you have anything?
I'm Richard Lucas, and I'm a senior at Mashpee High School. This trip was honestly like a life-changing experience for me, just being able to go and see how different it was there, how amazing and beautiful all the places we went to were. It was just something I would love to do again. I feel like I could go back there for two months and not see everything that is to see. It was amazing. I would go back in a heartbeat if I can. It was awesome. It was awesome seeing like a side of everyone that we've gone to school with most of our lives. Just we saw a different side of them because we're outside of school. We actually have to like be with each other for 11 hours a day. It was just, it was awesome and really cool to see all that, see all the old, all the ruins and all the beautiful fountains and art and everything we got to see. I would go back anytime I could, for as long as I could. It was just life-changing.
I'll go with you, Richard. I love that.
All right. So, I'm Christian Bober. I'm also a senior here at Mashpee High School. This was definitely a once-in-a-lifetime trip for me personally because I've never been on a plane before. Very, very different, very interesting to see. And like Richard said, it was very nice to see the other sides of people that we've been with, yeah, for years, but we've never been able to see them like as friends almost.
I'll hold the mic. I'll hold the magic pencil. But, all right, yeah, it is a talking stick, if you think about it. Okay.
Okay. But yeah, for all three of us, just being able to just hang out outside of school and for the, you know, for the most, for the most part, also being able to talk with other people that we never actually talked to in school, making new bonds and making new connections with people. That was another huge thing that we are all like presently surprised to do. And just overall, it was a wonderful experience seeing all the sights and eating all the delicious food. So that was fun. Only part of it is trying to get out of the giant crowd of all tourists. But we definitely found a nice place to eat. Yeah, of course. Is that it? Is that enough? All right, cool. Awesome. So yeah. Thanks, thanks Skylar.
Thank you. Thank you.
You see why I love these kids so much? Oh my goodness, they're right. There were groups that weren't friends before that just bonded like you wouldn't believe. And they just became like, we walked around thirty-one people glued together wherever we went, and we just became a little family. So it was fabulous. So, and I really wanted to just say one more thing about it. That is the tremendous chaperones that we had with us. We had Ms. Purdy, who, Teacher of the Year by the way. So she was just a tremendous help and always kept the crowd cheered up. And when they got tired, she was great at being able to motivate people and help them remember where they were. And she's the one that started most of the singing on the bus as well. And Mr. Leader was with us as well. He's retiring this year, but he sang with the best of them on the bus as well. And he was wonderful and nice and calm and stable, no matter whatever happened, if there was a crowd or whatever, he kept everybody nice and calm. And of course, Mr. T was with us and Celeste Reynolds as well. So we had an awesome team, and I think that's what kept it all steady and it just went perfectly. So I just want to thank all of them, and I want to thank all the kids for showing up today. So thank you. All right. Did you want to say anything too about it? Okay, all right. So now we're switching gears for the next thing that Effie and I are involved in as well.
So before you're moving on to the immigration?
Yes, any questions?
Well, I just want to thank all of you, all the teachers and staff who made this possible for our students. It's just amazing, and I just want to congratulate you, but mostly just thank you for your diligence through COVID, sort of staying the course and not giving up on getting that experience for our kids. And I hope that the Mashpee Enterprise does a really good article on this because you have some amazing photographs. And I think the community members in Mashpee would love to see our kids in those places.
That's great. That's great. Thank you so much. I think we will be talking to them. So, all right. So the next project we're going to talk to you about is something that's coming up next month. And we've been working diligently on it now since about January. And this is the project we're calling Who We Are? And it's exploring diversity through stories and photographs of the immigrant experience in our community. So we are doing this in collaboration with Dr. Becky Fields, who's an author and a photographer, and also with the Mashpee Inclusion and Diversity Committee, with Marie Stevenson, who's here. And she has something to show you. Way back years ago, we started this. Anybody recognize that cute boy in the front row? Who is that handsome guy?
When I graduated, 2011.
Yeah. So look at that. He was a high school student in that picture when we did a diversity event.
Inspiration.
And there he is. These guys haven't seen it either. Look, see how handsome, and now he's on school committee. Hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All for Ms. Purdy.
Very, I know, right? Anything for Ms. Purdy. All right, so go ahead and click that. All right, so, sorry the type is so long, but it's faster if I read it. So our goal for this is to showcase honor and highlight students and families who've immigrated to our Mashpee community. By sharing their photos and stories, we hope to help community members understand and embrace the backgrounds, strengths, and hopes of these immigrants and why they have come to make their new home in America. We hope to illustrate their resilience and determination. We plan to exhibit the student work alongside Dr. Field's work in the town library in May. The exhibit will remain in place through the summer and then be moved to other venues throughout the community. We will also create a smaller display in our school in the Hall of Flags. We would like to continue this as a legacy project tradition every year. Eventually, we will gather enough to create our own book, coffee table book, featuring the students' photos and writing. It is our wish that the images and stories help the public recognize our new American neighbors and to honor the cultural diversity and their contributions to strengthen our community. So that's the goal, pretty big, but very doable. Okay. So the seeds of the project started a long time ago with the picture we showed you. What was that for, Effie? That was the first Diversity Day?
Yeah. From Mashpee Human Rights Club. That was born back in 2007.
Right, okay. So, and Ms. Purdy's been the advisor for the Human Rights Club since it began. And so they started a process similar to this of honoring the different students in the school that, from different backgrounds. And then eventually, we had Diversity Day, which we ran three years ago before COVID. And that highlighted some of the immigrant students and their backgrounds. And we also had speakers and art and a lot of things that went with that special day. And then the other part of it was that a former Mashpee history teacher, Michael Ford, created the Hall of Flags. You might have seen it up if you've been up to Mashpee High School. And people notice it, but we walk right by it and sometimes don't realize what it is all about. But it was made to represent and honor countries that our students and staff came from, including the Wampanoag flag. So each of those flags is representing a student or staff that has come from there. And then there's a map on the wall. And after working there for fourteen years, I didn't even notice it until we started doing this project, I'll be honest. We walk by it every day, and people have forgotten what it started to be. But this was, explains the story of Michael Ford. He is the person who invented the whole thing. He got the flags to be made, and they put a pin in every spot on the world's flag to show the countries that everyone came from. And so we have a group of, we have a whole leadership team, and many of them are here tonight. And so we have a little staff of student photographers who trained with me to learn how to do family portraits or individual portraits. And these are the students' names here. Mia DeMyrdle, Will Chapman, Hadley Antis, Jamie Hughes, Sydney McKee, and Stephanie Grealish. A few little photos of them. And they, by the way, had to go, we had scheduled these any which time that these families could see us. So they were giving up a lot of their Saturdays and had to go to these photo shoots that were an hour or two each. And they really worked hard and did a fabulous job. And then there was the student interviewers. That is led by Hifsah Mustafa, who's senior project, this whole thing is. And then Tassia McGrail, Omna Ikbal, who are the juniors that are going to be taking this project over next year and continuing it. And then Kai Holmes and Emerson Frazier are the writers. So the interviewers are gathering the stories. There they are all over there. They're gathering the stories and doing the interview with people, and then the two writers put it together in written form. And then, so this is Dr. Becky Field. She's the photographer and author that we told you about. She's going to speak at the event when we have it. These are two books that she has written that she decided to do. She lives in New Hampshire, and she got the similar idea that we had to photograph and interview immigrants from her town and tell their stories. So she's going to be there, and she's going to display her work with ours. And then these are the countries represented that are just from our little group. So we have Morocco, Belgium, Armenia, India, Jamaica, Indonesia, and Ireland, in just the few families that we're doing. And like I say, this was a crazy timeline to keep track of with so many different moving parts. So we had to have a lot of changes, and we made a little chart to try to keep track of it, because there was a lot. But we finally got it all together, and all the photographs are done. And most of all, I think all the writing is done. And now we're just getting them printed and framed right now, and we'll be having the show in a few weeks. So this is just some photos of the photo sessions taking place. And so there would be one student assigned to each different family. And you could see them photographing them in different places at their house or their business, and really capturing their family life or their individual personalities. All right. And then here are the interviews or some of the pictures of the kids interviewing them. Sometimes it would be a whole group, sometimes it would be one or two students at a time. But they, and sometimes the people came into the classroom to do the interviews. And so we just want to let a couple of people talk for this very quickly, I promise, but student experiences from working on this project. So we'll have Tassia come up first. And Omna.
And Hifsah.
And Hifsah's the one that's doing this, as a senior project.
Yeah, so I'm Tassia. I'm a junior. This is Hifsah, she's a senior. This is her senior project this year, but Omna and I will be taking it over next year. And I just want to talk a little bit about what the project is. So obviously, we're interviewing immigrants from around the Mashpee community because we really just want to let like their stories be heard. And I feel like when like a new person comes to our school or community, we don't really like, I mean, we all try to get to know them, but it's harder, especially if there's like a language barrier or I don't know, other things. But also like getting to know like what their family life is about, and just like knowing their story and like some of the struggles they've been through to help us understand like more about who they are. And I think that's really important. So that's kind of what our like project is highlighting. And we've interviewed students, parents, and just really amazing people from around the Mashpee community. And one of the things that we like find the most is it's really hard to immigrate here. Hifsah is an immigrant herself, so if you want to talk a little bit about that.
Okay, so I moved here in like seventh grade, and I'm a senior right now. It was pretty hard for me when I first got here because I didn't speak the language. But then I had Mrs. Montesi. She is an ELL teacher here in high school. She helped me through like a lot of stuff. She helped me with assignments and like just getting to know people, like meeting friends and everything. And I think she was like the biggest support here. Also, like everyone, like the staff and students, they were pretty helpful in like getting me settled and everything. And yeah.
So some of the questions that we asked are like, who was the most helpful at like getting you settled here? What was like the most difficult part about leaving? And what we found was like the most difficult part about leaving for most people was like leaving their family behind. And during the interviews, a lot of, like especially the parents who had to leave their children, we had multiple adults who had to leave their children in their like home country in order to come here and like try and make a life for themselves so that they can eventually bring their children over. And a lot of them got like really emotional about it. So like just hearing their stories and like feeling like what they felt and like all the like power and like the struggle behind like their story, it's just, it was really amazing to hear. And if Omna wants to say anything.
So building off of what Tassia said, a lot of what immigrants face, you see stereotypes. And so the purpose was to dig deeper and show you that what they go through on the surface is nothing compared to the actual process and what they experience. Because we have, there was one person we interviewed, her name was Mrs. Dionne, and her story, like as girls, her story was super empowering. And it's nothing that you would ever expect, like she left her kids behind, and they also admitted things to us that you'd never expect them. She would tell us how like, she would cry every night because she missed her family, but she had to fight through it so that she could be successful here. And I think that's what's super important, that we need to all learn the truth and what they experience is nothing compared to what we see on the surface. That's pretty much it.
So I'm Stephanie Grealish. I did the, some of the photos for two families in one day. I remember going into it, I was really nervous because I've never photographed people before, especially because the first family that I photographed was a kid in my grade. And it was like a little weird because I'm showing up at his house and like I've never really spoken to him before. And I remember getting out of my mom's car, and Ms. T was like behind me, and I told her how nervous I was, and she was like, don't worry, it's only going to take like fifteen, twenty minutes, you'll be out of here, you'll be fine. Two hours later, I'm sitting at their island eating cake and spring rolls and just talking with them about literally everything, talking about school, like they're asking me questions, and I'm asking them questions. It just felt very strange how comfortable I felt, I guess, given that I'd never spoken to any of these people before, but they were just so inviting, and they seemed like they really wanted to be a part of it. And it was, it was just great to be a part of. And then the second one that I went to on the same day, a few hours later, it was a little rocky, there were some scheduling issues. But I remember the part of the interview had happened at that point, so I was sitting listening while Tassia was speaking to her, the woman. And she started crying within the first like five minutes, and I just felt myself getting emotional. And it was so strange how, in a way, it was almost like, not the overall experience, but like the little things, the way that she felt about her family, the way that she felt about wanting a better life was something that I knew that I could relate to, or like family members of mine could relate to. And it just felt like it was such a powerful experience and something that I'm really glad I could be a part of, because it gave me sort of a new view of people, sort of like how the kids from the Europe trip were talking about having a new view of students that they've been going to school with for years because they had to spend time outside of school. I felt like I got a new view of a kid that is in my grade or a kid that I've never even met before, but I found out lives in my neighborhood, we're on the same bus together. And I just, I thought it was incredible. It was really fun.
Okay. Couple more slides and we're done, I promise. So this is a little sample of the narratives from the interviews. And so we stole a little quote out of the story that is written for Hifsah. And this is some of the writing that they wrote. Over her time spent at MMHS, Hifsah rose in the level of difficulty of her studies, going from CP classes in her earlier years to being on honor roll and in AP classes. Throughout the journey of moving place to place, Hifsah was able to adjust to every new environment she was introduced to, despite the fact that Kashmir will always be her first home. She has found a second home on Cape Cod where she is discovering herself and working towards her own American dream. So here's what Steph was talking about. A lot of the families that welcomed us in their home gave us food and really made us feel welcome, and they even gave us some small gifts to welcome us or thank us, and I think that really meant a lot to the kids. This is the most important slide, I think, just to say that Mashpee Public Schools is devoted to honoring diversity, providing equity, and ensuring inclusion. And we're also a connected community. We strive to strengthen and grow positive and reciprocal relationships between the district and the community. And this project is a perfect combination of those two pillars that we really feel are important in this district. This is some artwork that one of the people that is being, one of the immigrants that's in the show is also a student in Mashpee, and she's a great artist. And she made this little artwork over here as our banner for ads and stuff, so. And then this quote, "While embarking on a journey as hopeful and beautiful as this, these stories can help bring a new light and create a diverse community for those amongst the Mashpee community." And that quotes from Ms. Purdy, who really started this whole entire thing and should get a lot of credit for doing this year after year after year, even before it was a popular thing to do. And she's very devoted to the Human Rights Club and to really pushing, helping our school continue to grow in the diversity. Okay, I think, this is just a sneak peek at some of the photos that we have that will be at the art show. And they're even going to be better. This is just a quick peek at some of them, but they're beautiful. The kids have done a beautiful, beautiful job. And we just wanted to thank J. Miller Framing, Mashpee Public Library, and the Mashpee Inclusion and Diversity Committee, and Marie Stevens for assistance with finding, helping us with the financing and grant writing and helping to plan the event. So thank you.
I need to add some more to that.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Well, we have trouble. We have to thank, number one, the Mashpee and Massachusetts Cultural Council, who gave us a grant. And Ms. Purdy and Dr. Field and I wrote the grant. And then we have received a small donation from the AMI Finance Company, which is Chris and Kristen Boyd, and a very generous donation from the Cape Cod Five. So we need to, they will be acknowledged. And so I hope that you will all attend and put that on your calendar now for May 26, 7 to 9, that evening. And I have to tell you that I'm going to try not to do this without emotion, but it's very hard for me, particularly for one particular reason is that I too am an immigrant, came here when I was ten years old. But more importantly, to see the results of, you know, Mashpee Inclusion and Diversity Committee, which you may and may not know about, it's relatively new, but this collaboration that's very, very high on our list with the schools, because that's where it all begins. And it's just, I'm just like blown away by the wonderfulness of these students and these teachers. And you won't find a bigger fan than me for Mashpee Public Schools, I can tell you that.
All right, I think there's just one last. Is there anything else? Okay, and this is the leadership team, and there is Hifsah. So we just want to congratulate her for doing a great job on her senior project this year. Thank you. Thank you. Sorry. I'm sorry.
You know, I think after those two presentations, you know, sometimes having teenagers, I wonder how people decide to be teachers. You know, because I just have two kids and um it's kind of tough. But when I see what you presented tonight and just between the trip and the project and uh makes me want to be a teacher, makes me want to get to do stuff like that. And it's just so inspiring and just, you know, just does my heart good to know that that's happening here. And, and so thank you all for your leadership. Um, I want to give my fellow board members here a chance to say anything. Does anyone want to add or respond?
I, I just want to say um it was amazing to see some of the pictures I've been over there and to see them. It's fantastic. And I'm sure it was echoed by the students, what a life-changing experience it is for them to see different cultures, different people. This is a connected community that really runs the globe and not just here in Mashpee. And I think things like this are great. And I, I'm hoping that we see you guys back in a couple of months, planning the next trip for the next group.
Yes, we're hoping Greece next year.
Greece. Alright, so I, I think they did a fantastic job. So proud of the kids, the staff, the parents, everybody, so great.
I just want to echo Dawn's sentiment and thank you all for helping to expand these kids' mind and view of the world. I mean, we're sending them out hopefully with a, a bigger sense of self. And I think having opportunities like the trip, like this project, to see how other people experience life is that, that's just as important as getting the A in the math test. Um, so I, I appreciate what you do and the extra effort you put into providing these experiences to these kids. Because that's, that's the important part of education, just as much as the academics, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys so much.
Can I add one thing?
Yes.
I just wanted to, before you all leave, I want to thank Marie Stevenson because she is so passionate about sort of ensuring inclusion and, and the equity piece and honoring diversity. She is tireless in her efforts to sort of make Mashpee better and make the schools better. And you know, she became introduced to Becky Fields and basically, she's super persistent, which we love, to make sure that we got that connection with Becky because it's really enhancing, you know, the schools and the students. So and all of the adults that are working on this and as well as the students, this immigration project, which is a legacy project now and will continue to grow, is really so helpful for us as a community, so I just want to thank all of you for that work.
Yeah, thanks Marie. Okay, um, so we're running behind ladies, I apologize for that, but um I couldn't, I couldn't cut any of that. Uh, so let's now hear from Skylah Rimpel, only thirty-seven, no, you must have less days left as a senior.
I think it's like seventeen.
Oh my goodness.
Counting down.
No.
And no, I wouldn't want to cut either of those short. I'm, I have Ms. Purdy for Senior Sem, and so they work so hard on the immigration project all the time. And Hifsa blossoming into it is awesome, and then all my friends posting when they were on the trip, it was so great. And so um both of those, I'm so glad they were able to happen because everyone involved in both was incredible. Um, and so good evening and happy spring. Our spring athletes are very happy as their seasons are far underway. Going to games is always a super fun way for students and community members to show their support for their peers. Um, last Monday night, the National Tech Honor Society hosted their induction ceremony, which was nice to have in person as a response to virtual ones last year. And Tech Honor Society, I feel like, I mean, they're all very special, of course, but tech, I always think is really cool because it's usually, you'll see a lot of overlap between kids that are in the English Honor Society and the Math Honor Society. But Tech Honor Society, you kind of get a different group of kids, which I think is really cool because then you kind of get all different people being showed that they can shine and all different people getting stuff to put on their resumes because they just earn it and shine in different ways, which is another thing that makes Mashpee pretty cool. Our students heavily enjoyed the April vacation, many of us went on trips, I didn't go on the Europe trip, but that one as well as other college visits as people get down to the final decision day, which is Sunday and then into Monday. The annual flamingo flocking has begun once again for a great post-prom fundraiser that's run by the boosters. And so uh it's what they do where if you want someone's yard to be flocked, then you fill out this form that's on their Twitter and it's on our class Twitter as well. And then these two kids from the high school will go and put these plastic flamingos all over their lawn in the middle of the night. And it's a great fundraiser, it's a lot of fun. And then you can also pay to not have your yard flocked if you really take care of your yard and you don't want it to be flocked. And so that's always a good thing and raising money for post-prom for the future years because we're pretty good and covered for this year's post-prom. Going all the way back to March, Mashpee Middle High School had a talent show on the seventeenth, St. Patrick Day, which was run by the sophomore class, which was a nice return as we haven't been able to have those in the last couple of years. And it's lots of singing and dancing and instrument playing, it's always. And if, if any of you were there, it was honestly so good. I love going to stuff like that, like the talent show and then as well as the play, which was the week later. And if anyone went to Puff's, they know it was absolutely hilarious. And so um I really loved being able to watch my friends up there on the stage and it was great. Kind of like what I was saying for Tech Honor Society, it's really nice to see different people shine and different people to really come alive in art. And I know that they did some theater things last year and there was like a virtual type of play, but it's just not the same. And so being able to do it in person in the way that they could was excellent. Um, Senior Ally Leeds hosted the annual higher ed fair, which is colleges and universities that come to the high school as well as recruiters for the Marines and for programs like Berto Education, which are travel-based after high school. And she hosted this on March 25th. And this was a really great opportunity for sophomores and juniors to kind of see what colleges are local, see what kind of programs they might want to go into. As well as some seniors who at the end of March were still not decided and were kind of leaning, got to talk to admissions reps from some of their top schools, as well as talk to some Army recruiters if they were leaning towards that direction. And so it's beneficial for a lot of our students. The National Honor Society hosted an induction on March 31st in which new sophomores and juniors and maybe one senior I can think of were recognized for their academic excellence and commitment to serve. And our, the Honor Society, they're working on getting volunteers for Ruck for Hit at the moment and they're working on a raffle as always. And so um all of our Honor Societies are really involved with our students, which is something that's really special. Senior Megan Burnett hosted the Credit for Life Fair as her senior project on April 6th. And this event is a partnership with Cape Cod Five, it's a legacy project, like a senior project that is continued and passed down from one person to the next, like the immigration project will be. And it's a simulation all about how to budget money. And so you pick out what kind of job you want and then you have all these different expenses and it's supposed to simulate what it's like if that was your real life. And so it's always really helpful, really well done and a good way for kids to kind of just have those kind of terms in the back of their head and little ways to build their credit score and then always having a resource now for someone that they can go to to ask those kinds of questions. Also on April 6th was Senior Exhibition Night, which is similar to a science fair that we have, except each trifold is a presentation on a senior's internship or their community service project that spanned all throughout their senior year or longer. And we had three seniors that went up on stage and gave their presentation on slides in front of everyone. And so that was Sam Kersey, who spoke on her Miles for Money project, which hers was really cool. It was that she started this nonprofit with some of her teammates from club soccer called Filter Fresh, which was all about, they did Miles for Money, which was a fundraiser where they raised money so that they could send money to different communities and I think Nagport, India was one of them. And then the girls who play soccer that they partnered with in those communities in India were able to buy water filters and give them back to their own community. And so what I thought was really cool about Sam's project is that you often see people like raising money for um different groups of people and that's of course great, like we're all about charity. But I thought it was really special that they were able to provide the girls with the funds to improve their own community and that the girls got to do it themselves, because I think that that's really empowering for people on both ends. And then Alexa Garcia went up and she shared about her internship that she does with students in Koshnet that are the third graders. And she really, she's one of my best friends and she's wanted to be a teacher for as long as I can remember. And so she knew that going into senior year, she was going to do an internship where she could be teaching here in Koshnet. And she's learned so much from it and she reflected a lot on it in her presentation. And then Jules Reynolds was the third senior who went and shared in front of everyone. And she works on a project that is all about mapping and humanitarian mapping, which is really cool. Ms. Reynolds, her mom is really into it, but Jules has kind of her own niche within it. And she has been hosting these map-a-thons, these workshops all throughout the year for students. And I go to a lot of them and they're all about learning how to map so that communities that aren't mapped, which means like there's not a set rule of where the roads are and where the hospitals are and where the convenience stores are. And that's really difficult for communities to be able to get the recognition that they need or to get the charity aid that they need because they exist, but people don't know that they're there. And so the work that she's doing and trying to spread both in Mashpee and nationwide with some of her other peers is really special. And so those are just three of the senior projects that we had. Everybody is doing a project that is incredible. And so it was really cool to see everyone honored in that way and really come to life when they're expressing their projects. And so our seniors are counting down, AP exams are on the horizon, the warmer weather is bringing some hope. And so we're really coming down to it, so thank you.
Well, we're going to miss you, Skylah.
I did, I'm going to go to U Penn.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Make sure you go to Pittsburgh, it's really the better part of the state. Just get over there to visit every once in a while.
Already biased to Philly after one week, but I guess I'll give it a shot.
Just don't become a Jets fan or Eagles. That's great, congratulations.
Thank you.
Preview of Senior Week?
Yeah, so Sunday, May 29th, we're doing a stayover at the school around like nine or 10 p.m. Because on Monday morning, we're leaving about five in the morning to go to Great Wolf Lodge. And then, so that's all day Monday. And then Tuesday, after graduation rehearsal, we're going to Sky Zone in Kingston. And then Wednesday, after rehearsal, we're going up and spending the whole day in Boston. And people will getting dropped off around Faneuil Hall and then people will be able to disperse and do what they want and then we'll all come back. And then Thursday, after rehearsal, we're doing a field day at the high school. We're going to do a cookout from the Fuller House, like football games. And we'll have a bunch like spike ball, kickball, can jam, cornhole, a bunch of stuff like that. And then we're coming back around six o'clock because we're going to go on a bus to Plymouth to do a boat cruise in the Plymouth Harbor around sunset. That's our senior week.
And then there's the Walk of Honor and Class Day on Friday.
Yeah.
Yes.
Wonderful.
I don't know.
Yeah, well, that's awesome, Skylah, thank you so much. Any questions for Skylah?
Thanks.
All right. Delia's up.
All right, good evening, everyone. It's just been a while since our last meeting, so it's good to see everyone again. It, as it's been a while, the weather has gotten nicer, although I still think it could be warmer. I feel like it's going to be May so soon that it should be a little bit warmer.
You're not used to this yet, this happens every, every spring.
I know, it's like after every, every summer, I'm like not used to it. It's like it just goes away and then I'm like, why is it cold again? But first off, um just before break, the seventh and eighth graders took their ELA MCAS. This was a stressful period for quite a lot of people. Um, but they all persevered and did a great job. I mean, we don't know the scores, but I know they all put their, put forth their best effort. Uh, we still have math and science MCAs coming up. Well, seventh graders don't have science, but eighth graders do. It's the first year doing uh the STE MCAs or the Science MCAs since, since COVID, so that should be interesting. Um, everyone's just preparing and taking pre-tests right now, but everyone has a very good like can-do attitude. So I'm looking forward to it. Um, off of this note, Environmental Club successfully pulled off the April 9th beach cleanup because before we were worried that it would be cloudy, but it wasn't, it was, it was fine. Um, and in total, we collected about four hundred and twenty-nine items, estimating about around a hundred and seventy-four pounds of trash, which I feel like is a lot, especially for like, like a public beach that people go to, especially in the springtime. So we did clean up a lot of trash, um which is crazy to think about. One of the heaviest items that we found was probably like fifty pounds, which is a majority, but there was still a lot of trash. Um, lots of plastics. Uh, but it was a wooden platform collected by Rebecca Swanson and Jayden Bryan. And I just want to give them a congratulations because it's, it's one thing to carry a fifty-pound uh wooden plank, but it's another thing to do it on a beach because when, I know that when I personally walk on sand, it's way harder than walking on pavement and grass. So I just wanted to give them a thumbs up. Um, it's really nice that this club can do such good for the environment. Like they're putting up birdhouses and just like encouraging people to do these beach cleanups. We're also seeing if we can have some representatives talk about the water bottle ban too. And I think it's just, it just makes you so happy when they're just um, they're really trying to protect the environment. Um, and we really do need that because we need to be more conscious of our, and aware of what we're doing to our environment. And then another club that has really done well is National Junior Honor Society. Um, we were able to, members were able to volunteer on April 9th with the Recreation Department's annual egg hunt. But um, one of the students, uh Layton McGory, he dressed up as the Easter Bunny. And he walked around and greeted kids and I thought it was so sweet. And they were posting pictures because at first I was like, I did not know that Layton was the Easter Bunny because he had the full suit on. And he posted a picture of him posing with people and I'm like, why is he posting that picture? And I was like, where is he? Is he taking the photo? And then, and then, and then he's like, no, I was the Easter Bunny. I was like, oh! Which is so funny and I thought it was so sweet because like, like when you're little and you see the Easter Bunny, you just get so excited. Wait, so I thought that was super sweet. Um, we're also getting ready for Ruck for Hit, uh like Skylah mentioned, on Saturday. We're having volunteers go and so it's basically from like ten to four or there are certain shifts throughout, like hour to two-hour shifts that, that members can take. And so in the beginning, like for the first four hours, it's like setting up. And then we're doing face painting, which uh takes an artist, so uh I'm not volunteering. Because I, the one thing I'm worried about is like painting someone's face and messing up. But I'm like volunteering for helping to clean up um and set up. And I think it's going to be a really nice opportunity because they're racing with, I think like, I think I said this last time, with like fifty-pound backpacks um to raise money and I think it's really sweet. Um, off of that topic, sports have been so busy lately as it is spring. So there's like lacrosse, there's um, there's lacrosse, there's tennis, there's track. So much is going on and I have a lot of friends that are in all different types of um sports. So so many games are going on that so many people are out on the field. It's really nice when you go out for practice and like everyone's out around you and it's nice out and it's a really good feeling. Um, one of the highlights that I took away from this month though, in the beginning of the sports, was um for the, for a tennis girl, Grace Dionne, she played her first ever, like, so this is her first year ever playing tennis. She got put into a game because someone was out and she really stepped up because I know it's really nerve-wracking going into your first game when you've, like this is your first year playing, you've only been practicing for two weeks and you go into it and she won her match. And I was like so happy for her. She played with Hannah Rogers, they both did amazing, winning their match. And um that was a highlight for me because it was Grace's first ever year ever playing tennis and she won a match and that's a really good feeling. She did great. Um, uh, off that no, off that note again. Uh, another thing is, a new thing has been started and it's kind of like the Mashpee Minute. Um, it's called the Falcon Show. And I, I think it's so cool. So they're posting these videos, they, so far they've posted, I think, three episodes. And it's, it reminds me of the Mashpee Minute, but they have different topics that they talk about in each episode and they're like interviewing students, interviewing teachers. And I just wanted to recommend that you watch it because it's very entertaining. It's, you should definitely take a look at it. Student Body Government had students going to home room yesterday to finish writing these letters on rocks. So it's inspired by Teacher Appreciation Week that's coming up, which we want to get them ready by then so that we can hand them out for the middle school teachers. We painted over these rocks and we're gonna, yesterday, students went down during home room and were writing like nice little quotes to the teachers. We wrote letters too, to personally to the teachers and like they filled out these forms, like saying their favorite colors and stuff. And so we put the letters on the colored pieces of like their favorite colors and so we're gonna send that out with the rocks and I think the teachers are really gonna like that. And this Friday, so Chorus, so it's a senior project, but so two groups from the Chorus High School and Middle School are going to go to Quashnet or coming here. And they're going to be singing in front of the sixth graders to try and get more sixth graders interested in joining Chorus next year, which I think is awesome because a few years ago, the Chorus program was so small and now it's just gotten so huge that it's like overfilling with students. And I'm so happy for Ms. Mills because like that was her goal. So we're going on Friday and we're singing two songs that we sent during our concert last, for our last concert. And I hope that the sixth graders like it. We're going at 12 and we're not sure how long it will take, but we, it's estimated that it'll be for the rest of the school day because they answer in questions and stuff like that. And last but definitely not least, the date for the last and final Chorus concert has been decided. And we were going to do separate for middle school and separate for high school, but because some of the seniors are graduating, that's why they're doing it in May, we're just gonna combine it. So it's gonna be a middle school and high school concert. And it's gonna be May 25th and the theme of the concert will be the Grammy Award-winning songs, which I think is so exciting because like, like students are pitching in to figure out songs that they actually are interested in because they're like picking their favorite songs that they know won a Grammy Award and they're putting their effort into singing it or like picking out outfits and it's exciting. So I hope you guys can make it. A time hasn't been decided, but it's probably going to be around like 6:30 or 7:00. And everyone's getting, becoming more and more like excited about it because it's like almost less than, less than a month? Yeah, it's a little under a month now because it's the 27th. And so our songs are pretty much formed. We're just practicing them and figuring it all out. It's really exciting. But that's about it. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Delia. Any questions for our students? Any comments?
I'll share the Falcon.
Patty.
The third episode dropped today.
Episode three.
That's the one I shared.
All right. Oh, good. We haven't lost Talia. We're gonna do, we're gonna do you, we can do you next or do you want to go after Stephanie? Okay, all right. Sorry, sorry ladies. I, I was worried we lost the tribal representative. Do you have to run or are you guys gonna stick around?
I have to go. I'm sorry.
That's all right. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you. See you soon.
We'll see you soon.
Not next Wednesday, but May.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, thanks for waiting, Talia. I apologize. Just too much, too much good stuff tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Skylar will probably take one.
So hello, everybody. I think I've introduced myself before. I'm Talia Lindry. I work for the Mashpee Education Department. So as you can see with the paper, there's a lot to update, but I'm just gonna go over a few key things since we're kind of behind. So the biggest thing, as you can see on the back, we have this save the date. It's a, it's for educators, like a STEM workshop that we're putting on in June. So just, you know, spread the word for the educators, see if they wanted to participate. It has to do with, you know, ecological knowledge and incorporating that within STEM and workshops with that. And there's gonna be some, you know, goodies there, some food and fun stuff to participate in. Also, just a quick update on that, at least the, the step work that we're doing is that we, we did our presentation with the Mass Association of School Committees and I think it went pretty well, but we wanted just to update everybody that we'll be having a second part of like the series. We're gonna, we're gonna talk to them and see exactly the date, but we just wanted to kind of put that out there in case anybody was interested in joining because, you know, we like seeing fellow Mashpeans on the call with us. Another big thing to probably mention is the new grant that we received. It's a new ARP, A-I-R, A-I-R-E grant. And I was just appointed as the grant manager of that and we're actually looking for admin assistant. So if you know anybody, it's a full-time admin assistant position. And that is a lot to do with direct services with the students, but it also involves a traveling, or it might not be traveling, we're still gonna figure that out, with the whaling exhibit. And it also include another agreement. So we'll be, you know, constructing that and drafting that and presenting, you know, to you guys because it has to be separate than the one that we already have to be correlate with the grant. So that will be that and that will be coming up. The education staff also was at the National Indian Education Association Hill Week. We learned a lot about what's going on in DC right now and how we can support, you know, Native American history and educators and our native students and what's going on there. So any questions, anybody can ask or if you guys are interested in any of that information, we could provide that to you. Also, we are still working with, we're actually working directly with a Native American history teacher in the high school right now, one-on-one with her Chorus. And we've really been involved with each one of her classes, I would say, and really giving her content and stuff like that. And we're actually planning another conference. We're looking into the end of August for teachers for professional development on Native American, Native American education history, as well as just some other like cultural components and supplements that we're coming up with because as we keep going, we're, we're finding more that we can help the teachers with within their curriculum. And to go along with that, another big thing is that the Native Education Council of Massachusetts was actually formally organized this year and it has representation from, right now we have representation from Mashpee, Herring Pond, and Aquena educators. And it's basically a council of representation within the tribes of Massachusetts and we'll be providing, we'll be creating supplements to go along with mass standards, but we're also working with the state, the Education Department, to really implement the council and have them work directly with the state and Dusy and when it comes to creating these frameworks and stuff like that and really getting, you know, us represented well across the state and not just within our local districts that we're working one-on-one with. So that's a pretty big step for us, an initiative that we'll be, you know, looking for support for and keeping you guys in the loop and making sure that you're getting all of the resources that we come up with and are able to provide. So a couple other things is that, you know, our youth summer camp is coming up. We'll be, and we're also looking into having a graduation brunch, so we'll be talking more about that within, within the next month and how we can, you know, be incorporating each other and so on and so forth. And we have Cultural Night every Thursday night. Spread the word about that. At 5:30 at the Community and Government Center. And that was just a brief little synopsis, but you have all the details here. And again, try and save the date for this and push this because we want to, you know, have as many educators involved as we can. Any questions?
Just one. So you, you sort of faded away from the mic when you were talking about the Thursday nights.
Oh, yes. So we have, so Education Department puts on, through our Indian Education Grants and other grants in the Education Department, we put on Cultural Nights every Thursday at 5:30 at the Community and Government Center. So right now it's drumming and singing and some regalia making, but we're gonna be incorporating more just cultural things, whether it be beating one week or different, different programs within each week as we get closer to pow-wow. Yeah.
And was that something that you were inviting us to, to attend at some point or is that just for tribal members?
I mean, it's for tribal members, but we obviously are always welcoming too. But it's, you know, to spread the word and stuff like that because I know with the Mashpee Indian Education Grant, I want to try and help collaborate with that and get, reach all of the students, you know, and just try and get all of them involved and to spread our culture and awareness. And, you know, if they bring a friend, they bring a friend or if you guys want to learn more too, we always welcome the opportunity to teach, you know? So it's really just kind of, we have our doors open.
Great. Thank you.
Talia, can I ask on the Chorus at the end of June?
Yes.
Is this shareable now with our staff, the opportunity?
Yes, so, yes, this and the flyer, I mean, I think I'll make sure to send the electronic version to you as well.
Okay, that'd be great.
So you could send out, because I'm pretty sure there shouldn't be a link already, but...
To register.
Yeah, but they, right now, we just have Kitty's contact for if you have any questions or if you kind of want to, you know, make sure you're on the email list when we do have the registration link. But I'm pretty sure right now, we probably already have one.
Only 20 spots, so anxious for those.
Yeah.
She is the, she's gonna make sure Mashpee gets there.
Well, everyone could share.
But we're generally for STEM folks, so if, if, you know, Mandarin teacher at the high school is probably not gonna be the audience for this. I just wanted to.
Well, yeah, yeah.
But the August one.
Yes, the August one is more general for all educators, but yeah, this one obviously it has a focus of the STEM programming.
Stephanie Soars being here is great.
Yeah, yeah.
Science.
Perfect. Awesome. So yeah, is there any more questions?
I think I just, so the Native Education Council of Massachusetts, I actually sat in on that meeting yesterday as the chairman of the tribe. I was asked by Roxanne to sit in on that meeting for a second. It was the first time that I sat in on that meeting, but I still think that the council has some challenges and obstacles that they have to overcome. And I think that it would be great for Chair Nicole Bartlett to be involved as the National School Board Association's American Indian Alaskan Native Council Northeast Director. I think that she can help in some areas with that. So I think it would be good to, for Nicole or that council can reach out to her so we can collaborate and see how we can help the efforts here in Massachusetts.
Yeah, for sure.
Great, thank you. And even, even MASC can't get that title right, so thank you. You did that exactly right.
Yeah, that would be awesome, for sure.
Okay, yeah, thank you. I also wanted to extend my thanks to the Tribal Education Department because I understand that you guys are making the continuation of the seventh grade exploratory for Mashpee Culture and Little Language available for the next school year and that was in jeopardy. And I think that's, I'm just so pleased to hear that that's working out. So please extend my thanks to Roxanne for her leadership and certainly I'm grateful to the superintendent as well. So.
Yeah, that is one thing we missed on here, but that is on our radar and we're turning, it's not language, it's more of culture-based.
Culture and history, yes.
Yep, culture and history. So that's a quick update at least on that part.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for Talia? Thanks for hanging in there tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Good time, Tosh.
Oh, the fun is not over. We have one more fun thing to talk about before we get into our regular business, so thanks, Stephanie, you want to introduce yourself?
It's been a fun night.
Yeah, it has been. You came to a, it's not always as fun. You came to a good meeting. All right.
Right, great job, girls, on your presentations there.
That always is great.
Yes, I was so impressed. Well-spoken. All right, so I'm Stephanie Soars. I am here on behalf of the class of 2024 whom I'm advising. And so the class of 24 is our current sophomore class. They were the class that during eighth grade worked towards the DC trip and was last minute it was canceled. And so they had fundraised and so as this year began and after, we kind of started to get to meet in person, the number one question the kids were asking was, are we gonna get a trip? Are we gonna get a trip? What are we gonna do? We worked so hard. And so, so we started brainstorming, what, what do we want to do? And they, there was this kind of like, we've been hit so hard type of attitude and my goal was to really empower them to say, well, why don't we turn this around and say, what do you want to do? So the class started researching different trips. They looked at the DC trip. We looked at a trip to New York City through a couple of different agencies. And then they came across this trip to Disney and it's the educational trip that Disney offers. And so we priced it out and it actually turned out this was the most affordable trip, cheaper than New York City, cheaper than DC, and it was most inclusive because the others required vaccination. And even though we're looking a year out, they couldn't guarantee that would be dropped. And many of our classmates are not allowed by their parents to be vaccinated. So the kids decided instead of leaving out some of their classmates, they would like to choose a trip that all students would be able to participate in. And so we started looking at dates, when would it be, when would be a good time? The class decided that February vacation would be a good time. April vacation for juniors, there's a lot of college trips going on. It's nicer to go south during February. And so, so they came up with this proposal. And so the proposal is for a four-day Disney trip, which would include the educational tour, which the group would be able to decide. They, depending on our size, they have performing arts, they have physics, they have leadership seminars, they have a whole bunch of different topics that we can choose from. And the cost of the trip includes the flight, the hotel stay, all ground transportation in Florida. The only thing that we would have to be responsible for is the bus ride to Logan Airport to and from Logan outside of the cost of this trip. I also added the payment plan and the night security to the original quote that they provided us because I just figured, you know, I didn't really want to be dealing with the finance part of it. I think that's where it gets a little sticky. So that would allow them to collect the money over time, allow students to sign up for a payment plan and be able to work towards their goal gradually over the next nine months instead of having to come up with a lump sum in order to register. And also I, I like the idea of the night security. I remember that being a nice thing in DC as a parent to know like someone's looking over my kid at night. So this is the proposal. It comes with the included chaperones that will not have to pay. And are there any questions about it? I'd be happy to answer.
Thanks, Stephanie. One question that I had when I was looking at page five, well, it's five in my packet, but it's like the last page of this. So it says included. Is airfare not included?
Airfare is included.
Oh, okay. I just didn't see it on the list and I thought that sounded like a lot of money without airfare.
Yes, no. That is included.
Gotcha.
Dinner's the only meal that's gonna be voucher? They're on their own for breakfast and lunch?
I believe that breakfast is offered, lunch in the park. They, they said they could put the voucher in, but it's actually more expensive than the kids would probably pay if they just brought their own money for lunch and then dinner is included. So breakfast is at the hotel.
So when I look at page three, the Disney YES program, looks like it's a three-hour program, is that correct?
Yes.
On day two.
Yes, and they, so that's a behind-the-scenes experience where they're either brought into the performing arts side or the, you know, the physics of the ride side. They offer a whole bunch of programs that the students can choose. I think in groups of 10, so depending on how many students sign up, depend on how many different programs are available.
And that's the only day that program happens in the whole place?
Yes, so that was, when we were looking at the days, you know, they offered a three-day, four-day, five-day. The three-day, it was, the kids wanted a little more time to explore the different parks and so that's why we went with the four-day option. The actual educational program is only during that day and then other than that, it's time for the students to just explore Disney, have fun, February break, spend time together.
Matt or Brian, do you guys have any questions?
I think this is a great opportunity. It is sad that I think that a lot of our students might be in the same situation for the classes after this class. I think this is a great alternative for them and I like how the class did their due diligence to figure out, you know, what was most cost-effective and including...
Matt or Brian, do you guys have any questions?
I think this is a great opportunity. It is sad that I think that a lot of our students might be in the same situation for the classes after this class. I think this is a great alternative for them, and I like how the class did their due diligence to figure out, you know, what was most cost-effective and including, you know, all their peers. And I think the nightly security is definitely a plus for me. Being a chaperone, I know how that can be, and it was Godsend to have nightly security on some of those trips. So, yeah, great work.
Do you have something?
Yeah, just one more question, kind of off of Don's question. So where that's the only day, is there a chance to add a second day? Like, say kids did the liberal arts program on day two, like, on day three, is it possible to add a second day if kids wanted to try a different program?
I'm sure it would be for an extra fee, so I didn't look into that option.
Okay. Just because it's like three hours, I don't know, I guess I figured it'd be like a whole day of the educational stuff, you know, like, but three hours, I don't know, I just, I figured like a second opportunity to try something else to maybe give an extra educational spin on it. Like, not that I want to be the thumb-please because I love Disney World, but I'm just saying.
It's never a break.
That's true.
Right, so they're not losing any, any school time?
That's right.
It was more of an opportunity for the kids to explore.
Thank you for pointing that out.
You're welcome.
I also have the thumb-please. I mean, you could, you could look to add a service component somewhere in the trip, like with a local nonprofit or something in the morning, or, you know, if you were hard over on increasing the...
If it's break, it's break.
But I think what we heard is just giving them the opportunity to be together in a different setting is educational in and of itself.
Right.
I have to be candid, I do appreciate the kids doing the due diligence, and I'm bulking a little bit at the reference to vaccination requirements because we really don't know what those will be in a year.
Right.
And while that does give, it creates an inclusivity thing, yes, you're giving the opportunity to people who aren't vaccinated, you're also telling people who maybe can't be vaccinated or don't, like, there might be people that balk at the fact that people don't have to be vaccinated. And so they might exclude themselves from this opportunity based on that criteria. So I don't know that we can do anything about it, but since you mentioned it, I just feel like, you know, it's, I just don't want the kids to think that that's some kind of guarantee. We have no idea. Schools could be required to have this vaccination in a year's time, we have no idea. So, so I would just caution that. But otherwise, I think it's, it seems like a well-thought-out plan. And I guess all we need is a motion to, I think what you're asking for is permission to open this opportunity up to the sophomore class?
Yes.
So do we have a motion from the board?
I do have one more question. So the pricing that you have listed here, that's just for reference, right? Every student will have the opportunity to participate? Is that correct?
So that was one of the things we talked about as far as scholarships go or something like that. The class does have funds available from what's left over at DC that they, it is possible to help students go that weren't able to raise the funds. On the flip side of that, they were also feeling that the majority of the class at this point is already 16, going into being 17. And a lot of the kids felt like there's jobs available and there's a, there's availability for all students in the class to be able to work towards this school. However, they're open to the opportunity to, to look at the exceptions of kids that maybe aren't able to for some reason. It was hard to put a number on that. I know at DC they say, you know, like, every kid can come and we'll, we'll do the raffles and stuff like that. We're absolutely open to running additional fundraisers or using the funds that we have to help kids come who are not able to, I guess on a case-by-case basis. And I, again, that's a, I've never been on the inner circle of financial aid here in Mashpee, so I don't know exactly how, how that runs. They're open to the opportunity for all kids.
Were you going to add something?
I was just going to ask, so your chart says, you know, 50 students paying, is that the ratio of six chaperones for every 50 kids? And so if there's 100 kids, it'll be 12 chaperones, is that how that goes?
Yeah, I mean, the class only has 90.
Okay, then.
We ran it on 50 based on how many kids were signed up for DC.
Okay.
And so it could be, unless, we would need 30 to guarantee this rate. If it goes under that, the rate could change.
Okay, gotcha.
Be great to get a report from the students as the National School Board Association will be having their annual conference there in Orlando in April, so.
Restaurant recommendations, right? Great, thank you. Any other questions?
I'll move we approve the class of 2024 class trip request to Orlando, Florida.
So we're not, are we, is that what we're doing?
I thought we were making it available to them.
Is there a difference? I mean, isn't a trip request usually like a...
Yeah, this isn't the actual trip request.
It's not the actual field trip form, but any out-of-state, so yes, we probably should have had the field trip form in front of you as well.
Or does that, I thought that comes after they've had, like, signups and stuff, when it's like...
When you have the numbers.
Yeah, like, that's when the field trip form gets submitted.
No, it's usually done at this stage, and then if for some reason they didn't make the numbers and the trip didn't happen, you're notified. But you have to approve the out-of-state, and without your approval, they wouldn't go forward with having kids, you know, sign up.
Okay, so we'll leave it as Brian said. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, second from Matt. Any further discussion? All right, Matt, how do you vote?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Good luck with your planning.
Thank you.
Let's get it on the master calendar right now, so we have it.
They'll be very excited.
Thank you, Stephanie. Okay. This agenda is blown.
I was going to make a suggestion.
Yes, I would love for you to do that.
We could potentially move my entire section to May 4th.
I think that's an excellent idea. Yeah. I, I think that's a good idea because we have a hard stop with the executive session in just over 30 minutes. So I will, can I, do I, I think I need a motion for that.
I think you do.
I'll make a motion to amend her, is it an amendment to the agenda?
Don will tell you.
To move...
To table, table that.
To table, yeah, to table item nine. Are we tabling anything else while I'm making the motion?
No.
Okay, to table item nine until the May 4th school committee meeting?
Great. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Brian, any discussion? Everyone should give Patty a round of applause.
I would like to say one thing.
Oh.
Let's move on, am I allowed to?
Let's vote first. Matt?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. All right, so we're going to table that. Patty?
Just quickly, today, because I don't want to do this May 4th, is the Administrative Professional Day, and I just want to acknowledge, and I do want to read the names, because we have an amazing group of hard-working and dedicated administrative professionals in this district, and they're very student-centered. And so anyway, very quickly, thank you to Patricia Ahern, Melissa Berry, Grace Ballmer, Kathy Cameron, Susan Cheklik, Maria Fisher, Kendra Freel, Jody Gallagher, Maureen Goldsmith, Shannon Lee, Cheryl McIntyre, Kate Mildy, Beth Nadel, Sandra Pacico, Amanda Peterkin, Darlene Phalen, Felicia Ryder, Jennifer Smith, and Sherry Vanitsky. So thank you to all of them.
Yes, thank you. I have to say, I was up at the middle high school. I like the new arrangement with, in the front office, and it's like a little, it's much more lively in there now with different people and voices, and it's kind of feels like a little...
Do you think it needs to be brighter and all?
Brighter? Are we talking paint, or what are we talking?
Lights.
Okay, so let's see. Next on the agenda, we need to approve the minutes from our March 16th meeting. I'll entertain a motion or edits as such.
I move we approve the meeting minutes for March 16th, 2022, with edits.
Were there any edits?
I think I just had a question, I don't know.
Okay, then I'll, then I'll, I'll just hang on to that. Do I have a second?
All right.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion, Brian?
Okay, I just don't know if it's like the formality with the present and also present. To me, it's just kind of a little confusing sometimes because I feel like it says superintendent, but it doesn't really specify, like, committee members. And if I was to look at this, you know, in the future, I would say, who's Joshua Tarski? So I don't know if the school committee should be present, and then also present should be like the admins, or however that goes. I just don't know.
I did, Tom.
I don't know.
Yeah, good suggestion.
I think that's a great suggestion.
Thanks, Sherry.
Any other questions, changes? All right, Matt, how do you vote?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Ashley Lopes, now your turn, Director of Finance.
In your packet are our normal FY22 budget reports. I don't have anything of significance to note this week. Does anyone have any questions?
You're trying to top Patty with efficiency. I did not have any. Don, do you have any?
I'll reserve the right to ask my questions later, at a later date.
That right is reserved.
On the agenda is also FY23 budget. There's nothing in your packet, but it's just to note that town meeting is on Monday and that our budget is moving forward for the town meetings, recommended budget at $400,000 less than what school committee had approved. So that's just the one note I wanted you to remember for coming.
Yes, and, thank you. Any questions about that? Everybody needs to be at town meeting to approve not just our budget, but the turf project.
And the new town seal.
And the new town seal, yep. Very excited about that. Apparently, it's still the Board of Selectmen, though. There was some kind of glitch in that last vote.
It was the wording, the voting, it didn't stick.
I don't know if that's on the warrant again, but I think it's a little cleanup to do there. Anything relative to COVID funding?
No.
No, okay. All right, thanks. Unfinished business, we have the Coach's Handbook. I don't think Matt, I don't see Matt here, but are we voting to approve the language updates?
Right, so on page 24 in the packet were the three suggested changes that were previewed at the earlier, last meeting, I guess it was, the last meeting? And we do, I mean, if you, there's a hard copy of the Coach's Handbook, we did not print that into the packet again. Yeah, it's up there.
I make a motion to approve these recommended additions to the Mashpee Middle High School Coach's Handbook as we discussed at the last meeting, as presented tonight.
Okay, motion by Kathy, this is page 24 of your packet.
I'll second that.
Second by Don. Any further discussion? I think the, the only thing, the question that I think Don raised during the last meeting when we discussed this was that if there, once a game's, so this last one under supervisory, which is kind of most germane to, you know, the incident we were discussing, is that what happens if we can't get two adults? And so, our, my assumption by reading this policy is that that game would be canceled. If, our attendance would be canceled at that game, but I, maybe I'm over-reading that?
I think it, for me, and yes, I would not probably send a team if we didn't have the proper supervision because we use that word insure, but it's really looking at the schedule, which is laid out, and knowing which teams are larger and would need that supervision on an away game. That should be planned well in advance so you're never running into a glitch.
Okay, yeah, that was just, so insure means what I think it means, that's, I appreciate that. Any other discussion on these items? All right, Matt?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Okay, so, back to my agenda here. So now we have a, updates to our committee meeting schedule. We've got a couple of, oh.
This is for next year?
Oh, it's for next year.
Yeah, so you have two, I think down under...
Oh, 26 is the...
Yeah, down in the new business, there's the next page.
Oh, okay, gotcha. So this is, I'm sure all of you went home and checked these dates against your existing commitments, as I did. And I'm sure we won't have to revise these at a later date, but I don't have any known conflicts that I would make any suggestive changes to. Don, what about you?
I, I did not check these. The one thing that I would suggest that does need to be checked is look at the collaborative dates.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's any conflict. I know there was one this, this year that we did have a conflict.
Well, if you only have one, then we're doing good. I think they meet on the second Wednesday.
Yeah, I know that we intentionally stayed away from their regular night, which I think is the second Wednesday.
Yeah.
And then I... We have, we have one on here on the...
Right, but that's February, we can't, because of break, we can't really do much about that.
Right. I think that's when it was, this time, that context.
Probably, okay.
Yeah, I didn't check it. The other dates, I think, are fine at this point in time.
When's the last day of school next year?
She'll look it up, the calendars.
Got to be right around there.
When is...
The close release, 15th, June.
Wow, that would be amazing.
22nd, we thought.
Sorry. No, that's okay. What were you going to say, Don?
No, that's, I mean, you know, just like this year, we meet on the 26th here, we meet on the 27th. And I think the intent with May 3rd is for the superintendent's evaluation.
Right.
Is that correct? But we're kind of slipping this time.
We can shift because we assume that you'll be re-elected.
Yeah.
So there'll be no change to the board.
The write-ins could be...
I, I know, I know.
So.
So without a change in the board, that urgency is not there. You could do it later, right?
No, I know. That's fine. I think it's good.
Okay.
Yeah, well, it's good to me. I'll be on vacation the week of July 20th, so I will miss that meeting, but that's the only one so far.
Okay.
And whether or not I'm re-elected in '23, I don't know about the 17th and '25, I cannot see into the future, but that is my reelection here, so.
Oh, I think Kathy just announced her reelection campaign.
Probably did, I think I did. It's okay.
You heard it here first. Okay, so let's just make a motion to approve. Who would like to do that?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting dates for, this is FY23.
Yeah, for the 2023 school year.
For 2022, 2022, 2023 school year.
Yes. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion? No. Matt, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay, so now new business, some additional calendar stuff that's more immediate. So we are planning to, one, you know, on the 18th, we're going to be having our meeting at the Mashpee Middle High School for the Dedif... meeting at the Mashpee Middle High School for the dedication of the Learning Center for Mr. Funk. And then we've also confirmed and added June 8th for our joint meeting with the Mashpee Wampanoan Tribal Council at the Government Center. Are there any other changes?
No.
Okay. And as far as I know, um, we've all confirmed our availability on June 8th, so I, I hope and expect that we'll all be there barring any emergencies, but this is really, we used to do two meetings a year, this is really our only opportunity to do this during the school year, so, um, thanks for working to set that up. Motion?
Do they have to be separate, or can we just?
No, you can do it all as one, yep.
So, Madam Chair, I move we approve the amended and updated Mashpee School Committee meeting schedule for 2021 and 2022 with the additions of June 8th, 2022 School Committee meeting with the Mashpee Wampanoan Tribal Council and the May 18th, 2022 meeting location changed to the Mashpee Middle High School for the dedication of Paul A. Funk Health Careers Learning Center.
He is just on it tonight, right? That was, that was perfect. I will, I will take a second.
I'll second.
Kathy seconds. Any discussion? All right, Matt, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so that's approved. Excellent. Okay, so we, we already talked about the May 2nd town meeting. That is in the gymnasium at the high school on May 2nd, which is a Monday, right?
Yes.
Yeah, this coming Monday, so, and then that same Saturday is the election at the Quashnet School. So our schools will be in the limelight again, hosting these big community events, so I'm very grateful for that. Okay, so next we have subcommittees, liaison meetings, working groups.
Are we doing the superintendents?
No, we've moved over to the next one. Yeah, it's all about Patty next meeting. Do, uh, do we have any reports?
No, we do not. The, um, one negotiations is ongoing with Unit C, and we did not meet as a subcommittee on my evaluation. I did share out with the two members, I think there was some kind of miscommunication about when we were going to meet. I do want to remind, so I'm going to resend, like you, you have some information in the packet, but the links don't work, so I'm going to send to the five members the actual packet so you can look at the links. And just as a follow-up, there's a self-check-in for the school committee as well, which you can look at next week, and you have more time since the membership's not changing. But there is that, that data collection spreadsheet that I will reshare, that you can all look at and add any more pieces to it that you might have to contribute to your own. So be on the lookout for my email to you of my sort of reflection on my goals.
Great, thank you. While we didn't have, I didn't have a subcommittee meeting, we did have the National School Board Association Conference, and I, so Kathy, myself, and Brian traveled to San Diego, so I was very grateful for that opportunity to meet with about 3,000 other school committee members from across the country, and I think there were some administrators there too, but it was mostly our peers. And we shared, so I'm, I know Patty and Hope know this, so it's more for the benefit of the viewing audience, that Brian was the speaker at the plenary breakfast for the American Indian Alaska Native sponsored breakfast, and he was inspiring and amazing, and I just, I just delighted in sharing a piece of Mashpee in where we were and sort of the people that were attend, in attendance from all over the country. And I, I don't want to say they'd never heard of Mashpee, because maybe some of them had, but it was definitely, they were very far afield when I asked if anybody knew where it was. Nobody raised their hand, so, so it was really impressive. And, and then I also attended a couple of sessions on LGBTQ+ equity, which we were both, Kathy and I were both at that one, and that I have relayed some of the exercises and parts of that workshop to Patty because I thought there were some professional development elements that were good, and I think they would be good for us as a board too, so potentially for our retreat in August, we could consider that. I also attended one on supporting students through what the speaker referred to as social capital, but this idea that we've seen here tonight, this idea of making connections for kids and how a support system that, that's beyond their immediate family or, or stuff that happens outside of school is really, time and again, not as reliable as those connections that they make in school, and how significant that is in a child's life and really ability to succeed and thrive. So that was very cool. I attended a couple of, um, sessions around Indigenous language, and this, the particular one I went to was focused in Alaska, and have shared some information about that. And, and then there were lots of exhibits to talk about, you know, we're making changes potentially to our school, we're having a new lunch, a new food services director come in and just sort of exploring kind of what other districts do, and I kind of relayed some of that to you. But overall, it was really fun to hang with my, my Mashpee people. I was commenting that I saw more of them in, at that conference than I have probably in the last two years combined, since we only get a couple hours together each month, so it was really just so fun to get to know you better and you better and just have conversations. And, you know, we were pretty much joined at the hip the whole time, and I think I shared with you guys that a big highlight was seeing like Brian's mug plastered all over the place. Every time we went into a room, there were like this huge screen, and there was Brian's face with his Mashpee t-shirt on, and it was just, I just was tickled, I just, it cracked me up every time. I told him he's school board famous. So anyway, and I'll, so I'll pass to you or Kathy or Brian to add.
I echo Nicole's comments. I mean, it was such a great opportunity to, to be there in person as opposed to virtually. I think you get a lot more in person. So I, you know, like Nicole said, I went to one of the LGBTQIA+ programs on the pre-conference. That was really impactful, and I definitely want to touch base with some of the club leaders in the schools to kind of see where their works at and see how, as a school committee, we can ensure that we've got the right programs and policies in place for those students. I also attended one, and I'm kind of sad that Skylah and Delia left because I went to one about student representatives as part of the school board and the different roles that they play, and I do have the packets I can share with you guys, but it was really insightful. They had a couple members who were voting members, which I know some places do that, and I know Massachusetts did have like a representative program at the state level, and I don't know if Skylah attended, I don't, I don't think Delia was there when it happened, but there is something that happens at the state level, and I'd like to see, you know, how we can incorporate our student representatives into that because what happened at that session was, it was really interesting to hear. The other thing, sorry, Don, the electric buses, that was kind of an eye-opener.
Yeah, I forgot we'd be the electric buses.
We went to the electric bus presentation and.
You guys were naysayers.
It wasn't just us, I think it was just the information coming at us. I kind of, Nicole and I kept looking at each other going, ooh, ooh, and then another thing would come out, and we'd be like, yeah, that's not going to work either. So it, maybe in the future, but I don't think in the near future because of what we were hearing, but it was still really interesting to, to get that information and hear, hear the options that are out there. But yeah, Brian did a great job at his keynote, at his keynote breakfast speech, that was fantastic, so great job, Brian. And the keynote speakers were great too, you know, revisiting Mr. Rogers' Neighborhood the second day was kind of interesting. But the third day, I think she was the Arthur Project woman, I think Brian and I both left there. I don't, you weren't there for that one. We both left there kind of just amazed at how she overcame all this stuff, and it, it made me think a lot of our students and how they overcome things and just that tenacity that we try to instill in our students, and I just, overall, it was just a great experience, so really enjoyed it.
It's great.
Yeah, it was a great experience, and it was beautiful to see, you know, all the educators and, you know, leadership, you know, come together in one area and really realize that we are making, you know, changes and impacts in our young people's lives. And I think it was Damon Deames, the Shark Tank guy, that kind of said it, you know, if it wasn't for his mentors and people in his life, you know, that they wouldn't really be where they are today, and how we're kind of, you know, those young people's mentors. And I mean, it was really eye-opening. One of the highlights for me was attending the trade show with Kathy and just going to the different booths. And one of them, actually, they had the sensors, and we talked a little bit about how we've had our issues here with the students trying to cover up the sensors and so on and so forth, and they actually had a sensor that, you know, if you tamper with it or anything, it would go off, but it was also like an emergency if you say like keywords like help or emergency or something, it kind of like alerts, you know, the office or the administration. So that was also cool. And then also attending the American Indian Alaska Native meeting, board meeting, and Madam Chair was reappointed as the Director for the Northeast Region again, so congratulations. And it was definitely great to, you know, bond with the fellow school committee members and, you know, get a better understanding of what that is. It's a whole different, you know, animal, and, you know, I definitely enjoyed it and look forward to, you know, attending the next conference and bringing a lot of that back to, you know, to our district.
You need to move that mic up, you're getting a little.
So I attend, tried to attend virtually, and I'll sum it up in one word, it sucked.
That's two words.
Two words, it sucked. You know, having attended these in person in the past, I, I chose not to because of travel concerns at this time, but, you know, the offering online was de minimis and really didn't provide any benefit, and I envy you individuals who attended in person. Sounds like you had a great learning experience and weight networking experience. I can't wait for the next one in Orlando.
Orlando.
I can walk there someplace. All right.
And we did, Kathy and I, we did, when we were at the receptions and stuff, we met the new president of MASCE, so Viola was at our meeting in Hyannis in November. Massachusetts has a really, a big leadership role in the national leadership, and, and so I guess I should say we're influential, you know, because I think we are the leading state in the nation with public education, but, so Viola was there, and so we met the new guy, which of course I can't remember his name.
Frank.
Frank, okay.
From Kansas.
Yeah.
He was very excited about the basketball finals.
Yes, oh, that's right, yeah. I'm glad you remembered, yeah.
Yes.
And he, we invited him to come to Mashpee and certainly to visit, and we, we talked up our Mashpee game. Brian really did a credit to not just our town, but certainly myself personally. He made me look very good, he made Kathy look very good, he made our district look very good, he made our, frankly, our whole state look very good. And, uh, but it was, uh, it was funny, I mean, not funny, but at that board meeting, you might just mentioned, they, so just like at the state association meetings where we have like our division meeting or something, so this was the, that sort of in-person meeting of the, of the board, and that's open, and we're trying to get more people to join the council and engage, not because they're native, but because they support native students. And, you know, members of, I think it was the New Mexico Association, said that, you know, their state association was basically not allowing them to form a working group in their state. And just hearing from other places, and then there were a couple of elders there from, I believe, Alaska, who, you know, had traveled a long way and sort of were sharing that they were interested in becoming more engaged, and it was just really, I think we, as, there just aren't enough hours in the day, frankly, for everything that I know Patty wants to do and Hope wants to do and everything that we want to do. But I still think, and one of the reasons I'm on that council and that, that board is because I think we really would benefit from connecting with other districts who are serving native students. We really haven't even, haven't even touched the tip of everything that we could learn, and, and I did connect again with the consolidated New Mexico School District. One of their school board members was there, and they're very excited about the potential for an exchange program with our staff, our teachers and their teachers. They, they pointed out something that I've learned in my role at NOAA, which is that, you know, mentoring and exchanging information, just like we heard from our students tonight, you don't, the benefit is, is everywhere in that situation, you know, so we think our students, we think our teachers would benefit from going to the Navajo Reservation because that's, that's such a different situation. But she was over the moon about the idea of her teachers getting to come to Mashpee and Cape Cod because she thought that there was a lot that they could learn from us. And so I, I kept thinking of it like, wow, I want this opportunity for our staff, but it really is an opportunity for us to help other educators in the country, and I think, you know, Mashpee, we're leaders, we're leaders on the Cape, we're leaders in the state, we are national leaders as well, and magna equity award winners. So, you know, I just want to say again how much I hope that we can still grow these partnerships beyond what we're already doing, so. Great job. And Matt, you got to go to the next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, so thanks. I'm glad we had time to talk about that, so, yeah. I don't have any additional items, and I don't see anybody else for public comment. We don't have, we know we don't have anybody on the Zoom, so I think we, I need a motion to adjourn and go into executive session. And there's a very specific motion there on the agenda.
I'll make the motion that we move, that we adjourn the public meeting and move to go into executive session and not to reconvene an open session pursuant to Mash General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, 2 and 3. To conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
Yes.
Second.
Thanks, Don. Any discussion? All right, Matt, how do you vote?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.